Okay, Madam Mayor, we're now live on Facebook.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, and good evening everyone, and welcome to the annual meeting of Dorish Town Council. Before we start the formal business of the meeting, I have the great pleasure in presenting to Dorish Town Council 2021 Civic Awards, one for an individual and the other for an organisation. So I would like to thank all those who submitted nominations. And all of the nominees were of an excellent standard and a real tribute to the community spirit that exists here in Dorish. The winner of the individual category award is Mari Whitehead in recognition of her outstanding service to the community as a volunteer for the Strand Community Centre. Very many congratulations on your awards. So there's this certificate that will be coming to you after the meeting. Well done. Congratulations. The winner of the organisational award is the Open Door Dorish Community Information Centre in recognition of all the outstanding service to the community over your 15 years of operation. So very well done. Congratulations. This certificate will be coming to you after the meeting today. And thank you to all of the volunteers. Well done. Thank you. So as I just said, a copy of the awards will be made available to you after this meeting. If a recipient wishes to make any comments, they may do so. Would either of you like to speak? Don't have to if you don't wish to.
Chairman, if you'd like to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just quickly, I'd like to thank everybody involved in Open Door. It was our 15th anniversary last year and we acknowledge the support and dedication of our volunteers and supporters together with the support of the community, the town council, business and local shops in Dorish who have supported us in so many ways throughout the years and to our local customers, clients and doggy visitors. I'd like to make a special thanks to my colleague and fellow coordinator Olivia for her dedication, skills and support which were a key factor in enabling Open Door to provide a high quality service in this difficult year. Secondly, to the Chair, Secretary, Treasurer and Trustees of Open Door, thanking them for their dedication and support and guidance at this difficult time. And also a big thank you to Harry for all his work in the background, for all his support and for everything he has done for Open Door. So thank you, everybody, and thank you for the award.
Thank you very much and very well done to all of you. Thank you. Okay, so now on to the formal business of the agenda. Okay, so item number five, mobile telephones. Councillors and members of the public are requested to ensure that mobile phones are switched to silence during the meeting to avoid disruption. Recording that this meeting is being recorded. Public participation, members of the public will be given an opportunity. Sorry for that brief pause. Members of the public are given an opportunity to address councillors present at this meeting regarding agenda items at the discretion of the chairman. Members of the public will also be given an opportunity to discuss town council activities, not on the current agenda, after the close of the meeting. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak before this meeting? I don't see any hands raised. And while we're talking about raising hands, this is a virtual meeting, so if anybody does wish to speak, please raise your digital hand and the town clerk will assist me with bringing you into the meeting. Okay, thank you. So before we start on the agenda, welcome to the Reverend Dallas Ailing, who has joined this meeting. Dallas, over to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And just thank you for the opportunity to come and share with you this evening. This is a poor alternative to a civic service which we booked in twice and sadly had to cancel. So thank you very much for the invitation just to come and be with you tonight and to share some things that I'd like to contribute and for us to think about and to pray with you. So I've chosen a reading from Romans, chapter 12, which says, "Let love be genuine; hate what is evil; hold fast to what is good. Love one another with mutual affection; outdo one another in showing honour. Do not lag in zeal; be ardent in spirit; serve the Lord. Rejoice in hope; be patient in suffering; perseverance in prayer. Contribute to the needs of the saints; extend hospitality to strangers. Bless those who persecute you; bless and do not curse them. Rejoice with those who rejoice; weep with those who weep. Live in harmony with one another; do not be haughty, but associate with the lowly. Do not claim to be wiser than you are; do not pay evil for evil, but take thought for what is noble in the sight of all. If it is possible, so far as it depends on you, live peaceably with all." You may not all be Christians, but I'm sure that there are some parts of that reading that you would want to identify with and know that you would want to express those in your lives and even as you serve this town. And serving the community is a calling, isn't it? And it can be costly to follow that calling. It requires patience and wisdom so often. It needs skills of listening. And if authentic, it needs to be done with truth, honesty and out of love, that things can be better for the community that you serve. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all who serve in those ways as town councillors here, as staff, and the many volunteers who help to make things happen in Dorish. So this passage, which I've just read from the letter to the Romans written by St Paul, is one of the passages I was thinking about because, well, it's been a really difficult time for everyone and it certainly hasn't been easy time to be mayor, especially as Alison has now served two years, maybe unexpectedly, but I know with a willing heart. I'm sorry that it's not been possible to hold the normal civic service, although we did manage to hold the first one for everyone. It has been and continues to be a challenging time when so little has been normal as we understand it. It's been, there are times when we are called to rejoice with those who rejoice and weep with those who weep. That's not an easy thing to do, is it? To try and get it all right, you know, because for some people are rejoicing when other people are weeping and vice versa. And yet, throughout this time, Alison has represented the town council, as far as I can see, exceedingly well. She's been available to the community and has supported those things which could be done, albeit sometimes in a very different way. Alison has not worked alone, of course, but has been supported by you all. Having to continually adapt and not knowing exactly what the plan is, sometimes almost at the last minute, and whether it will actually change, that is such a challenge to live with. I know, I live with it fairly daily at the moment. And therefore, it can lead to disappointments as we think that things are going to go one way and we discover that it has to change and be something quite different at the moment. And that has required perseverance. And although we have been a community which has not seen much of the pandemic in terms of deaths, it inevitably has had an effect on people's general wellbeing and also on our economic prosperity. I know that Alison has supported helping Dorish. She produced, you might remember, the Dorish Christmas Carol that some of us participated in, and that was great fun. And I met Alison in the town late night shopping for Christmas, supporting the local shops we bumped into one another, doing the same thing around the town. Much has otherwise been virtual by videos having been made. Sometimes we've been able to make those videos together and they have been released. Both the town council and the church are here to serve the community and working together sometimes means that we can both achieve more than where we try to go it alone. So I'd like to thank Alison for the opportunities for that to happen when that has been possible and also for the service that she has given to us all as mayor. The language we are living with is hope. A hope that things will return to normal. I'm not sure what normal is anymore. There are some things which I hope we have all learned, which means that we can go forward with a renewed sense of hope. Hope is very much part of the Christian faith. Hope with purpose and even with a willingness to rise to the challenge that it will bring. That will bring change when it's needed, but also stability when it is required. So with those thoughts in mind, reflecting on those words that I read and on this last year, I would like to finish with a prayer. You'll be welcome to join in with me if you would like to. Faithful God, I thank you for your faithfulness to us, even when we are uncertain of our faithfulness to you. We give thanks to you for those who respond to serving communities and especially Dorish and the surrounding area willingly. And we give thanks for Alison's time as mayor and for what has been achieved. We pray for our community, for recovery in all ways that are needed and help us to live in harmony with each other and peaceably, not only for the good of ourselves, but for the common good. May we stand together against all that is wrong and rejoice in all that is good and to be willing to face the challenges of a future yet unknown. May we however receive the many who visit our town with hospitality and a warm welcome. I pray that the love you have for us will bridge the divides and unite us in the common purpose of wanting to bring blessing to the people of this town. Amen. Thank you very much for allowing and inviting me to take this opportunity to just offer that at this point in time.
Thank you very much, Dallas. Thank you for joining us at this meeting. Thank you. Another item before we commence this meeting, I would like to say that during this year, we have raised some funds for the two charities that I chose as my mayoral charities. That is the RNLI in Timor and the Friends of Dorish Hospital. So while this has been a very different year, we have raised some funds and I will be in contact with you soon to present the checks to you. So thank you for all your work that you do for our community. Thank you. So now we move on to item number one, the election of the mayor for 2021 to 2022. So I now call for nominations, please, and then we will go to the votes.
Chairman, if I may, oh sorry, councillor Morehood has her hand up.
So, sorry.
Sorry, Chair, councillor Morehood has her hand up.
Okay, councillor Morehood, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would, if I may, ask your permission, please, to, I would like to request that all votes on items on the agenda this evening be recorded in accordance to standing orders three R. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Morehood. Thank you. Okay, next councillor to speak, councillor Ridgley, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to nominate councillor Val Morehood for mayor for the coming year, please.
Thank you, councillor Ridgley. And can I ask for a second, please? Councillor Laver.
Sorry, Chairman, I believe councillor Tamlin is next.
Okay, thank you councillor Tamlin. Please go ahead.
I'd like to propose that councillor Morehood would be mayor as well, please. Seconded, sorry.
Thank you very much councillor Tamlin. So we've got a proposal and we've got a, that's been seconded. Councillor Laver, did you wish to speak before we go to the votes? Please go ahead. Councillor, I guess you're still on mute.
I think there may be some technical difficulties, Chairman. It should be asking you to unmute on your screen, councillor Laver. But it's not unmuting. Right. Ah, there we are.
Right, it's gone. It's gone now. Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. I apologize for that, Madam Mayor. No, I wish to second the motion. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. So now we'll go to votes. All those in favour of councillor Val Morehood becoming mayor, please raise your hand.
Chairman, sorry, it's, that councillor Morehood requesting a recorded vote. So if I may, I'll read out the names and if members could answer for or against.
Thank you.
Councillor Dawson.
Four.
Councillor Foden.
Four.
Councillor Goodman Bradley. Is that four, sorry? Councillor Heath.
Four.
Councillor Mary Laver. Perhaps you'd like to indicate with a thumbs up or down? Thumbs up, thank you very much. Councillor Terry Laver.
Four.
Councillor Morehood.
Four.
Councillor Mayne.
Four.
Councillor John Pedderick.
Four.
Councillor Linda Pedderick.
Four.
Councillor Kraus.
Four.
Councillor Tamlin.
Four.
Councillor Taylor.
Four.
And councillor Ridley.
Here.
Thank you very much, and that's unanimous, Chairman.
Thank you, and congratulations to councillor Val Morehood on now becoming mayor of Dorish. Well done. Congratulations. So there will now be a brief five-minute adjournment while my chain gets handed over to councillor Morehood and sterilised in between to be Covid secure. So I'm going to mute myself and we'll see you back in five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. If members wish to mute themselves and turn off their camera while we have this short interlude, then we'll be back as soon as possible. Chairman, you may just wish to announce in a couple more minutes for people to return before we resume.
That is now, is that me?
It is.
It's me. Right, we'll resume once everybody's got themselves comfortable and back on view. That was an interesting interlude due to the Covid restrictions. I think everyone is back now. And we will continue with the agenda this evening. Under item one, election of mayor. Item A, declaration of acceptance of office by the newly elected mayor. So I will read here what I will have to then sign. Declaration of acceptance of office. "I, having been elected to the office of town mayor of Dorish Town Council, declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability." This declaration then will be signed and witnessed by the proper officer of the council. As you will see, under item B, we have already had to do the presentation of the chain of office in a rather unusual manner. So I now have this lovely chain of office and I hope I can do it justice as the retiring mayor has done. The item C, presentation of town crest and medallion to the retiring mayor. You will see, if Alison, councillor Foden shows you, she now has a lovely medallion and the town crest as recognition of her service as mayor. And she's actually done two years, as you know, and the last one under very difficult circumstances. Item D, it says here, new mayor's acceptance speech. I'm not going to make it long, obviously. I just want to thank you for electing me as mayor. I am pleased to accept the honour of serving as such and I also accept the responsibilities which come with this role. "I promise to represent this council, town and parish to the best of my abilities and to work towards the recovery of Dorish from this last very difficult period, looking towards a thriving future for residents and businesses alike. This is a great place to live and work and there is also much to offer to our visitors, including the future of green and eco-tourism. May I offer my own thanks and congratulations to the retiring mayor, councillor Alison Foden, who steered us through the past" who steered us through the past two years, including through the awful Covid pandemic and all that that has entailed. I think she deserves thanks from all of us, the community in general. I just wish to add that I want to nominate, as my charities for this next year, the various youth organisations at the parish. Young people have suffered too during this pandemic and I wish to support them as a gesture of goodwill to them and those volunteers who work so hard to help them. I won't nominate them specifically, but you will learn gradually who I have in mind. And thank you very much. Right, so we go on to item two on this agenda. Presentation of chain of office to the mayor's escort. Now, a little unusually, since I have no immediate family here in Dawlish, I am intending to invite some close friends to support me as the occasion dictates. I hope that you will all be happy with that arrangement. Thank you. I now wish to invite the retiring mayor of Dawlish, this is councillor Alison Foden, to address us under item three on this agenda. Thank you, over to you, Alison.
Thank you very much, thank you. Serving two consecutive years as Mayor of Dawlish has been a real honour, a challenge and a whirlwind of exciting plus difficult experiences. The first line from Charles Dickens, A Tale of Two Cities comes to mind. It was the best of times, it was the worst of times. With the vaccination rollout continuing apace, I am optimistic that we are now in a spring of hope. I have appreciated what an amazing and empowering community we have here in Dawlish. In this time of crisis, we have seen the positives of connections and people working together, the knitting together of society in a time of crisis. Thank you to all key workers, volunteers and all involved in helping Dawlish. I remember in May 2019, when I was selected as mayor, I felt excitement and a passion to do my best for Dawlish and the people of our parish. What followed was a whirlwind of exciting events, including visiting local community events, groups and meeting people, the fabulous Dawlish Celebrates Carnival Week, the Christmas market on the strand and hosting a children's Christmas party. March 2020, and I returned to Dawlish from a week's holiday and two days later the whole country went into the first lockdown because of the Covid-19 pandemic. Lockdown was totally new to all of us, restrictions on our movements, strict instructions to stay inside and a public health emergency. April 2020, Dawlish Town Council was commended by Government Minister Robert Jenrick and the National Association of Local Councils for being one of five councils currently leading the way for the establishment of Helping Dawlish, an emergency response fund. Also that month, following the town clerk contacting all town councillors to consider the constitution of the council for the following year, I was asked by councillor Morehood, the deputy mayor then, to continue as mayor for a further year. I thought that stability and continuity would be the best option for Dawlish Town Council and for the parish of Dawlish in a time of unprecedented crisis and increased stress. Hence, I volunteered to continue to serve as mayor, thinking that it would only be for six months maximum. Virtual town council meetings on Zoom and live on Facebook followed, plus planning for Covid-19 secure measures for helping all in need through Helping Dawlish and planning for opening up the town and local businesses from the first lockdown. Among my positive memories are attending all the films shown at the Dawlish Drive in cinema, organising the virtual Easter bonnet parade this year, helping with the Dawlish poppy wall and the Luke Wave Walkers storytelling competition, plus organising the creation of a Dawlish Christmas carol. Finally, it has been a huge honour to be the Mayor of Dawlish, especially during this most difficult term. I have managed this on top of working in my day job in the NHS at the RDU hospital. Thank you to all the Dawlish Town Council staff. Thank you to Andrew, town clerk, and to Angie, the projects officer, for all of your support and guidance during this difficult year. And thank you to Yola and Amanda and thank you to Don and Steve, our water power wardens. Thank you to all town councillors for the work that you do for Dawlish. And now I'd like to wish the next mayor of Dawlish, councillor Bowe Morehood, the very best wishes for your term. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Foden. And all I can say is you're going to be a hard act to follow. I would just like to add for the record now that councillor Woods joined the meeting at 19:34. And now we will go through those who wish to speak, in order of appearance, so to speak. Councillor John Pedrick first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, it's regarding, I shouldn't follow the agenda, am I okay to speak about that now?
Can I just see if anyone wants to speak following the mayor's address first and come back to you?
Okay.
That's all right, thank you. I've got councillor Wrigley, councillor Taylor and councillor Terry Lowther. Are you all wishing to speak following the mayor's address or are you looking towards the next item?
Next item.
Pardon?
I want to speak on the next item, please.
Right, well, I go back in that case to councillor John Pedrick, who was the first person to raise his hand.
Can I, I don't wish to be contentious on your first sitting, Madam Mayor, but I do happen to notice that councillor Pedrick, councillor Taylor and councillor Ridley have had their hands up for the last five minutes, at the very least. That's before.
I have the list here in front of me, councillor Lowther. I am joint host, so I am aware of who has raised their hands first. It happened that it was councillor Pedrick, but as you remember, a moment ago, I asked whether he wished to speak following the retiring mayor's address or whether it concerned the next agenda item. He confirmed it was agenda item four, as do all of you, it seems. So since he was the first person to raise his hands, I must invite him to return to that topic. Then it will be councillor Wrigley, councillor Taylor and yourself in that order. I would just ask for confirmation from the town clerk for that order.
Yes, Chairman, that's right. Prior to moving on to that item, can I just ask that you take a vote to note the retiring mayor's comments, please?
Thank you. So to finish on agenda item three, could I have a physical hand, please, if you wish to vote to note and record the address from the retiring mayor?
Chairman, you did make a request for a recorded vote.
I did.
So we should probably go through that now, if you're happy for me to take the vote.
We can, yes, thank you.
Okay, I have allowed members to unmute themselves, which might be a bit quicker than me requesting you to do so. So here goes, councillor Dawson. And councillor Foden.
Yeah, four.
Councillor Goodman Bradbury.
Four.
Councillor Heath.
Four.
He appears to have left.
No, councillor Heath, he's just confirmed, Chairman.
Oh, he's there, is he?
Councillor Mary Lowther.
Four.
Councillor Terry Lowther.
Four.
Councillor Morehood.
Four.
Councillor Mayne.
Four.
Councillor John Pedrick.
Four.
Councillor Linda Pedrick.
Four.
Councillor Prowse.
Four.
Councillor Tamlin.
Four.
Councillor Taylor.
Four.
Councillor Woods. That's a four. Councillor Ridley.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chairman, that's unanimous.
Right. Now, I will ask the clerk's advice. I return now to councillor John Pedrick to speak on agenda item four. He was the first to raise hands.
Yes, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Pedrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. May I be one of the first to offer my warmest congratulations on your appointment as Mayor of Dawlish? It is indeed a great honour, an honour which you truly deserve. I believe that this evening that we need to appoint a deputy mayor, a deputy who will help you to share the heavy workload that you will doubtless have to bear. I would like to nominate councillor Lisa Mayne as deputy mayor. Councillor Mayne has been a town councillor for six years and during that time she has selflessly served the residents of Dawlish. During the last year councillor Mayne has been an integral part of helping Dawlish and has worked hard to support the vulnerable residents of our town. Experience is so important, together with the ability to support the mayor. Councillor Morehood was helping to navigate this council beyond the Covid pandemic and strive to ensure that our parish emerges stronger. Members, I hope that you will support my nomination for councillor Mayne to be deputy mayor of Dawlish. Thank you.
Does anyone wish to second that proposal?
Councillor Prowse, Chairman.
Councillor Prowse. Right, before we go to vote on that, we have people also waiting to speak on the same agenda item. So I will go to the next person on the list, which was councillor Martin Wrigley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, thank you to the officers, thank you for dealing with my doppelganger. It's kind of interesting to be copied in that way, it's never happened to me before. And thank you for dealing with it, I was trying to indicate that it wasn't going to be me. In terms of speaking, I would like to yield to councillor Terry Lowther, please, and then come back in after him.
Just on a point of clarity, I believe.
It's Gary Taylor.
No, no, but the alleged doppelganger left of their own volition, we didn't remove them.
The next, actually, in order of appearance is councillor Taylor, who wished to speak.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I also would wish to leave the floor to councillor Lowther.
Thank you. Now we come round to councillor Terry Lowther.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, again, and my congratulations to you for your election as mayor. I have a contrary proposal, in fact, for this particular item. Members representing the three groups on the council have had numerous discussions about the aspirations of their respective group, attempting to build up effective committees and management structures. Unfortunately, it hasn't been possible to reach, and I'll try again, an amicable agreement on all the roles in the council and all the positions in the committees. I know we all feel that it's important that council is seen to be capable of managing its affairs without acrimony and exposing the public to undue leniency and tedious voting. Therefore, I propose we defer this item and leave selection of the deputy mayor to further discussion, preferably by a broader group. If we refer to the next council meeting scheduled for June 3, we should be able to reach an agreement acceptable to all groups. That's my proposal and I hope you'll agree with it.
And I'd like to second that.
Excuse me, I have to make my notes, otherwise I forget what I'm doing. Right, now we had a proposal on the table to start with. I again defer to the town clerk. The first proposal was to elect councillor Mayne and there was a second for that. The second proposal has been to defer this item to the following town council meeting in June. I wish to be advised as to which I take votes on first, please.
Chairman, it's preferable to take motions in the order in which they are put and on the table. Of course, the mover of the original motion may wish to withdraw if he would be minded to also defer the item. He does not have to. If that's not the case, then members may discuss that motion once or more with your discretion, with the mover of the original motion having the final say. You'll then proceed to a vote, if that vote falls, then you would move to the second motion to defer the item to the June council meeting.
So in that case, I will go back here, please, to councillor John Pedrick. Would you be happy to withdraw that motion and to have this agenda item deferred to the June meeting for further consideration?
No, Madam Mayor, I think the councillor Mayne would be an admirable choice for deputy mayor and I think we need to move forward, you need a deputy alongside of you.
Right, in that case, would anyone else like to speak to that proposal, please? Councillor Tamlin.
Yeah. Am I unmuted? Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Right, I'd like to propose that we continue with the elections. I think the delegated officers have had time to actually get their act together, so to speak, and I think we should go for the deputy mayor this evening and the other elections, other committee elections. Thank you.
Well, we're just talking about item four at the moment, which is electing the deputy mayor. Thank you, thank you councillor Tamlin. Right, well, in that case, I will take votes on this first motion and if that is not successful, I will take votes on the deferment, is that correct, town clerk?
Yes, Chairman, I was just going to see if you wish to ask anyone else if they wish to speak on this motion.
No one else has put their hands up. Does anyone else wish to speak on this motion to elect councillor Lisa Mayne as deputy mayor? No one else wishes to speak? So we have a proposal and we have a second.
Chairman, you may wish to ask for any other nominations?
Yes, thank you. You can tell I'm new to this. Are there any other nominations for the post of deputy mayor?
Councillor Gary Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wish to nominate councillor Rosie Dawson.
Is there a second for that?
I will second that.
Right, thank you. In that case, I will take a vote in order of those proposals. The first proposal, and I wish you to raise your hands as a physical vote, please, for this. Those in favour of the election of councillor Lisa Mayne as deputy mayor, please vote now.
Sorry, just a reminder, you requested a recorded vote, so I'll read out the names if I may, Chairman.
As they raise their hands.
No, no, I'll go down through the list and ask for it. So this vote is for those in favour of councillor Mayne.
Understood.
Okay, councillor Dawson.
Abstain.
Councillor Foden.
Abstain.
Councillor Goodman Bradbury.
Abstain.
Councillor Heath.
Abstain.
Councillor Mary Lowther.
Four.
Councillor Terry Lowther. Was that, sorry, Chairman, was that four? Councillor Morehood.
Four.
Councillor Mayne.
Four.
Councillor John Pedrick.
Four.
Councillor Linda Pedrick.
Four.
Councillor Prowse.
Four.
Councillor Tamlin. Was that four, councillor Tamlin? Councillor Taylor.
Against.
Councillor Woods.
Four.
Councillor Wrigley.
Abstain.
Chairman, that's nine votes for, one against and five abstentions. And you now need to take the vote for. And you now need to take the vote for councillor Dawson.
Yes.
Councillor Dawson.
Those in favour of the election of councillor Dawson as deputy mayor, please now indicate whether you are for or against.
Councillor Dawson.
Four.
Councillor Foden.
Four.
Councillor Goodman Bradbury.
Four.
Councillor Heath.
Four.
Councillor Mary Lawther.
Abstain.
Councillor Terry Lawther.
Abstain.
Councillor Morehead.
Abstain.
Councillor Main.
Abstain.
Councillor John Peterick.
Abstain.
Councillor Linda Peterick.
Abstain.
Councillor Prowse.
Abstain.
Councillor Tamlin. Councillor Tamlin.
You're muted.
You've lost her.
We'll come back to councillor Tamlin, Chairman. Councillor Taylor.
Four.
Councillor Woods.
Abstain.
And councillor Ridley.
Four.
And councillor Tamlin.
Abstain.
Chairman, that's six votes for and nine abstentions, therefore councillor Main has been duly elected deputy mayor of Dawlish.
Thank you, Andrew, and congratulations to councillor Lisa Main. And I shall look forward to your support. I know you've had experience of the job itself, so I'm in safe hands, as they say. Right, I would like to move on to item five, which is declaration of office and presentation of medallion to the deputy mayor. Now, this is what gets complicated on Zoom.
Chairman, if I may assist, both councillors Dawson and Main were sent copies of the declaration of acceptance of office on the off chance that they'd be successful in invoking for deputy mayor. So I believe councillor Main should have that document to hand.
So we'll hear your declaration of acceptance, please.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you, councillor, oh, lady mayor. And I don't know if I can give you any advice, but I will be there if you need me. Declaration of acceptance of office. I, having been elected to the office of deputy town mayor of Dawlish Town Council, declare that I take that office upon myself and I will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Right, in that case now, we're going to go on to the main meat of the meeting, which is apologies for absence, please. Do we have any apologies?
None received, Chairman.
Thank you. Agreement of the agendas between parts one and two. We have no part two.
Right.
So that is, does everyone accept that, approve that? Yes, thank you. Declarations of interest. Do we have any declarations of interest received?
Doesn't appear so, Chairman.
Thank you. Dispensations, this is item nine. Do we have any dispensations or requests for dispensations?
None received.
Thank you. Moving on to item ten of this agenda, minutes of the previous meeting. You have all had time to read them, I'm sure. And therefore I'd like you to vote to approve or so, so that they can be signed and adopted. Those in favour of approving the minutes of the last meeting, please?
Chairman, I have to remind you, you request a recorded vote. Unless you wish not to have a recorded vote, unless you wish to withdraw that request for this item.
I think this item, we'll be happy, if everyone else is happy with a simple physical vote.
I'm not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That was unanimous, I believe.
Yes, Chairman.
Item eleven, minutes of committees for adoption. This is to receive the minutes of the following committees for adoption. You've all had the opportunity to read the minutes of all meetings, including those we have for adoption. So I would like to invite the chair of Finance and General Purposes Committee of that meeting, which is councillor Martin Ridley.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to present the minutes of the meeting of the Finance and General Purposes Committee from the 25th of March 2021 for adoption, please.
Again, we can raise a physical hand for this. Are we happy to adopt these minutes? You've all had the opportunity to read them.
Has it been seconded?
That's a good point.
Oh, seconded.
Councillor Terry Lawther will second. Everyone in favour? Thank you. And then I would like to ask the chair of the planning committee from the councillor Lyn Goodman Bradbury, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to present the planning committee minutes for the meetings on the 11th of March and the 1st of April for acceptance by committee, please.
Anyone who will second that, please? Councillor Taylor's hand was up first, I think. Those in favour of adopting these minutes?
That's unanimous.
Unanimous?
Yes, thank you.
I see that councillor Taylor has his virtual hand up and I see that councillor Ridley has now put his up. Councillor Taylor, what would you like to say?
My hand is up in advance for the next item.
Oh, that's a little bit previous.
It's no more previous than councillor Peterick's.
Oh, dear.
Right, please.
Chairman, apologies, I've taken councillor Taylor's hand down, so it relates to this item, so just to bear in mind councillor Taylor did have his hand up before councillor Ridley on the next item.
Thank you. So we're moving on to the agenda item twelve, which is election of councillors to the following committees. And this is where we have a little bit of a hiccup. Councillor Taylor, you had your hand up first.
I did, Madam Mayor, but in view of the fact that some considered it might have been too early, I'm happy to defer to councillor Ridley.
I was rather teasing you on that point, councillor Taylor, I'm happy.
Thank you.
You can understand, I'm new to this and I'm playing catch-up all the time.
Madam Mayor, you're doing a wonderful job, but I'm still happy to defer to councillor Ridley, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ridley.
In essence, I was going to simply take us to the position that councillor Lawther wanted us to be in in the earlier vote, in that we have yet to come to a full agreement between all the people on the construction of the committees going forward. And it would be more constructive to have those conversations over time to give us a chance to come to a better working situation. So I would like to propose that we defer this item to a subsequent meeting, please. Could I have a second?
Yes, could I have a second, please, for that? Councillor Terry Lawther.
Yes, I'll second that.
Does anyone else wish to speak on that before we go ahead? Councillor John Peterick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm a little concerned about this because I thought that we were all fit and able to deal with this tonight, but if it's going to be deferred, then so be it. But I hope we need to attach a very firm timescale to this deferment and not for it to go on for ages as it already has. And I also feel that the committees, when they are put together, are a fair balance across the council. Are we agreed on that, members?
Can I?
Would anyone else like to add to that comment? Councillor Terry Lawther.
Yes, the first thing is, when I asked for deferment, I was deferring it to the next meeting on June 3. And so I'm not thinking of an indeterminate period of longitude or anything like that. As far as groups, when I when I introduced the proposal for deferment, I was very careful not to use the word parties or anything like that. I use groups. We're not a political organisation. We are a group of individuals, again, avoiding using the word independent, but a group of individuals with our own views about whatever. And I think it would be wrong to imply that there's any whipping or any other way of people being grouped together and therefore voting in any specific way. I hope that we will all vote as individuals with our own beliefs and consciences and not worry about what the person next door is voting. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. There, councillor Prowse, who wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I would like to add my congratulations to the office that you now sit on. I have in the past been there. It's a great honour, it's a wonderful thing and it's a lot of hard work, but I know you're up to the challenge. Otherwise, I would never, ever have voted for you. What I would like to say, as far as deferment is concerned, so be it if that is the way these committee votes. But I do agree that these, all these people on these different committees must be in place and voted for on the 3rd of June. We cannot, as we all know, we cannot work without these committees. And I agree that politics have nothing to do with it. We were all voted here as the good for the good of this town. We all know if we were politically voted in, but that's not the point. The point is, it's for the good of Dawlish, the good of the residents, and we are in for a very hard and challenging time as we come out, I hope, from full lockdown on the 21st of June. So whatever happens, I would like to see these committees up and running by the 3rd of June.
Thank you, councillor Prowse. Before I come to you, councillor Peterick, I would just follow on from what councillor Terry Lawther said, this should not continue ad infinitum. And the suggestion of the next, very next council meeting, June 3, I think should be the actual cutoff point. But I will come back to you now, councillor John Peterick. It was your proposal to defer this item twelve, election of councillors to the committees.
No, sorry, that wasn't my proposal, Madam Mayor, but I accept that that's probably where we're going to be today and that's okay. But just a technical question, actually, because we're not appointing new chairs and vice chairs in committees and so on, I presume that the existing ones will stay in place until the next full council meeting in June. Is that correct?
Could I ask the clerk for his advice, please?
Thank you.
You're muted, Andrew.
I didn't realise I've become a councillor, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
The, yes, the committees will continue as they are currently constituted. The only difference will be that yourself will come off the HR committee and councillor Main will go on the HR committee as the deputy mayor. Other than that, everything remains as is until you make a decision on the 3rd of June.
Thank you. Does that answer your question? Councillor Peterick, you've disappeared on the screen, you're down at the bottom. Thank you. So I know that councillor Heath wishes to speak and then I will come back to you, councillor Peterick, if I'm, as I assume you wish to make that proposal. Councillor Heath.
Exactly what I was going to ask. So we are assuming that the committees carry on as they were for the time being, correct? Yeah, fine, that's it.
So are we actually going to have a proposal now that this item twelve, the election of councillors to the committees be deferred to the next full council meeting on June 3?
Chairman, councillor Ridley proposed that and councillor Terry Lawther seconded it, if I'm correct.
Thank you, I've lost track. Thank you very much. Councillor Ridley, are you happy to confirm that?
Absolutely, yes.
And in that case, we will take it to the vote.
Madam Mayor, may I interrupt you and say, if we are going to defer item twelve, would it not be appropriate to defer item thirteen and vote on that at the same time?
Well, can we come to that as the next agenda item and you're welcome to bring that up, but if we could just do this, deal with this agenda item twelve first. We have a proposal to defer the election of councillors to the committees to the next full council meeting during the third. This will be a recorded vote. Those in favour will now answer to the clerk, please, or for and against.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Dawson.
Four.
Councillor Foden.
Four.
Councillor Goodman Bradbury.
Four.
Councillor Heath.
Abstain.
Councillor Mary Lawther.
Four.
Councillor Terry Lawther.
Four.
Councillor Morehead.
Four.
Councillor Main.
Abstain.
Councillor John Peterick.
You're muted, councillor Peterick.
Four.
Councillor Linda Peterick.
Abstain.
Councillor Prowse.
Four.
Councillor Tamlin. Was that four, sorry, councillor Tamlin?
Against.
Against. Councillor Taylor.
Four.
Councillor Woods.
Four.
And councillor Ridley.
Four.
That's eleven votes for, one against and three abstentions, so that deferment is approved, Chairman.
Thank you very much. So we will now move on to agenda item thirteen, appointment of members to represent the council on external bodies. You have a list already. It doesn't actually name the mayor or deputy mayor. It simply gives the titles. So if you were so minded, it seems perfectly reasonable to be able to vote on this. But I will be, obviously, I'm in your hands. So the first person wanting to speak on this is councillor Roslyn Prowse.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I am going to propose that we defer this. I have seen this list, I have read it through. My name appears in several papers on things that I would not sit. I have no intention of sitting. Therefore, I think the list needs to be looked at again. And I suspect that this might be the case with several other members, especially in view of the fact that we now have a new mayor, new deputy. And I would like this list to be discussed at the next June meeting. So if I could, I would propose it was deferred if I have a second, please.
It looks as if councillor John Peterick is willing to second that. May I ask now, councillor Rosie Dawson wish to speak on this and then councillor John Peterick, I'll come back to you. Councillor Dawson.
There was just a couple of items on that list, actually, just that Dawlish Action for Youth has always had two councillors and not three. But in actual fact, for the last few months, it's only had one, so I'm not sure that two are actually needed, as with most of the organisations on there. I wanted to point out that the police advocates number seemed to have gone up as well, which was one more than was agreed by this council. And also that Helping Dawlish is still very much running and does need to have town councillors present and it's not on that list at all.
It's, it is on the list I have. But this may be that.
It's not on my list.
This is why I'm.
So I'll come back to councillor John Peterick, you wish to continue.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. It was just a second councillor Prowse's proposal, actually, that we defer this item because I think there are one or two irregularities within it that we need to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Peterick. Yes, I believe that there are one or two queries on this list and I'm wondering, I would like to ask the clerk, actually, whether it would facilitate this if people sent their requests to represent on these various things direct to the office to yourself?
You're muted. No, no, I'm not, Chairman, I'm running it over. I don't think really it's the role of the office to compile a list because there may well be two or three names going. because there may well be two or three names going for one position.
Right.
And it's not necessary, well, it's not for me to say who does go on it. But it would be better if an agreement could be reached informally amongst the membership that can then be put to council on the 3rd of June, if that's what members are minded to do.
Thank you. Councillor Terry Lowther, you're frantically waving at us.
I am frantically waving, because I'm wondering whether in the hassle that we've had, and I've certainly been running around like a headless chicken today, the wrong list was sent in, or an old list was sent, or something. There's obviously been some sort of mix-up, and I have to accept responsibility for that, since I sent the stuff in. It seems inevitable that it must be deferred. And whichever way we do it, I don't mind if you send them to me or whatever, you can send them by all means. And I'll put them together and send them back to you, so that you know that you've got the right list. If you're happy with that, that's what we'll do.
So in that case, we'll take a vote, please, on the deferment of this item to the next full council meeting on June 3rd, with the proviso that in the meantime, this list is revised, taking into account the comments have been made already, and I'm sure there will others will come in as well. Right, we'll take a vote, those in favour of deferring this item.
Chairman, is this a recorded vote? Do you ask me for a recorded vote?
Yes, please.
Right, no.
Councillor Dawson?
Or.
Councillor Foden?
Or.
Councillor Goodman Bradbury?
Or.
Councillor Heath?
Or.
Councillor Mary Lauda?
Four.
Councillor Terry Lowther?
Or.
Councillor Morehead?
Four.
Councillor Mayne?
Four.
Councillor John Pedrick?
Or.
Councillor Linda Pedrick?
Or.
Councillor Prowse?
Or.
Councillor Tamlin?
Four.
Councillor Taylor?
Four.
Councillor Woods?
Four.
And councillor Ridley?
Four.
That's you, Adam, it was, chairman.
Thank you. So we've dealt with that, we will come to final conclusions on June 3rd. We'll move on now to agenda item 14, bank signatories and operation of accounts, page 15 to 16 on your agenda. You approve the bank signatories and method of operating the account. Would anyone like to speak to this? Councillor Prowse?
I stand to be corrected by the town clerk, but the four signatories, as far as I remember from the past, are the mayor, the deputy mayor, the chairman of FNG, and the chairman of CAC. Now, we are not going to have those two chairmen in situ, so how do we go forward in the next month?
Chairman, if I may, the document details the mayor, deputy mayor, chair of FNGP, chair of CAC, and chair of events committee, as it currently stands. And as the committees are to continue until the 3rd of June, then the signatories would remain. It's the positions contained in the document that you're approving, not necessarily the person.
That was a good point to raise, councillor Prowse, it is covered by the previous decision. And as long as that is noted in the minutes, that we are continuing with the current signatories, because until other chairs and vice chairs are elected on June 3rd, the current signatories stand as they are now.
Thank you very much.
But thank you, that was a very good point to raise. Is everyone happy to approve that we do that, that we continue until June 3rd, when we have the new elections? Would you like a show?
Are you requesting a recorded vote, chairman?
I think a show of hands will be sufficient for this.
That's unanimous, chairman, thank you.
Thank you. So we go on to item number 15, this agenda, arrangements for insurance. This is something we note, you have had all the paperwork. We do get an awful lot of homework these days, don't we? I think the clerk and our offices are super efficient, and they make us keep on our toes. So to note that the council has in place adequate arrangements for insurance cover in respect of all insurable risks. This policy is due for renewal in June. Would anyone like, oh, the clerk would like to speak?
I would just add, chairman, that when it does come for renewal, this will go through FNGP prior to coming back to council for the noting.
Right, so are we happy to note that that is a procedure? Hands raised if you're happy to note that.
Thank you, chairman, that's unanimous.
Thank you. So it'll go to FNG first. Item 16, this agenda, financial regulations, that was page 17 to 40. That was a really good bit of homework, that one. And I'm sure that councillor John Pedrick, in particular, would have gone through that with a fine toothcomb, as he's want. Members are recommended to approve the National Association of Local Councils' amendment to the model financial regulations to note that with the departure of the UK from the European Union, the thresholds under public procurement regulations are no longer in sterling and sterling and euro, they are only in sterling. So are you happy to note this change and this recommendation, please? Or are you happy to approve? First of all, councillor Terry Lowther would like to speak to this.
Yes, I am happy to approve it, thank you, Madam Mayor. The only difference is, as quoted in the agenda, are the removal of euros and the insertion of pounds sterling. And a couple of things have been changed, so 2,000 pounds has become 3,000 pounds, is that the change I noticed?
Madam Mayor, the only change is in the footnote of the procurement rules, nothing else has changed.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Then I'd ask you to approve them.
Thank you, Andrew, and thank you, councillor Terry Lowther. So members are recommended to approve, I will take a physical vote, raising your hands for this, please.
Chairman, was there a second, sorry?
Ah, councillor John Pedrick is seconding.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Those in favour, raise your hands, please. That is to approve the recommendations.
That is almost unanimous, I'm not sure if that's...
Yeah, I approve, my hands up, my hands up, sorry.
Thank you very much. So that is dealt with, that's been approved. And we can move on to agenda item 17, Helping Dawlish, what a wonderful organisation this has been, or rather, a wonderful amalgamation of organisations this has been. And we're going to have, and note, a verbal update from our projects officer, Angie Weatherhead, who's put such a lot of work into this. Thank you, Angie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to give you a brief update, we have issued recently make-it boxes, which have gone out to some local referrals. They have been produced by Rock, sorry, by Roots Community Engagement, with the funding of both Rock and Helping Dawlish. Our digital tablets project, the Tablets to Go, currently has eight tablets which are nearly ready to go, and they're the first tranche of the grant. It is worth noting that Rock Dawlish Mark Jones received a certificate of appreciation this week from the local police service. Helping Dawlish continues to meet bi-weekly, and in general, we have between seven and eight representatives on the call from local churches and the community organisations, and we continue to update each other on projects that are happening locally. The final bit in the short report is just to note that we currently have 60 volunteers registered for the vaccination, help in the car park, and we will be progressing 11 days' worth of help so far in May. Just a very brief update, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Angie. May I just ask something here? How is the pressure on the Helping Dawlish organisations going at the moment? Is it lessening, or is it holding steady, or can you give me an idea, please?
I can give a brief update, that each of the groups is gradually coming back off the ground to more normalised operations. However, some organisations, such as Assist Teambridge, Dawlish Community Transport, and others have indicated the pressures of coming back off the ground and are looking for more volunteers or assistance. Dawlish Action for Youth recently reported they were restarting, but obviously within social distancing guidance, which presents their own challenges. As we know, Open Door is no longer there, so but Anthony, the coordinator, is still helping us within Helping Dawlish. So I think there are a number of different challenges, and for example, Reverend Dallas Ayling is currently working on a swap clothing project, which is due to do a pilot in the autumn. So I think the need is different, it has changed over the series of the pandemic. But we are noticing much more mental health issues are coming forward in terms of the situations that people are presenting. So I think it's morphing, and it will continue to morph as time goes on.
Thank you. Could I ask one other thing, and that is, how is the funding situation?
My understanding from the finance officer at the start of this financial year was there was roughly 2,100 pounds in the funds for Helping Dawlish, of which some of that has been spent recently on topping up the larder, which is still being used, and also on other projects. We still continue to receive donations that come in, and for example, the Nickabank, of which the chair will know I'm quite fond, does not receive financial donations, but donations in kind, and that is recently sent two more bags of said items to local schools. So it is still going, and we still continue to receive donations, but at a lower level. One area that we have stopped supporting is the volunteer shopping, where the council was facilitating the methods of payment. So people were able to pay who couldn't use the internet, and that has actually now ceased as we've come out. But what's happened instead is some of the local organisations have been, a volunteer has gone out with a person to help them shop, to give them confidence in the local community, whereas previously their shopping was being done for them. So as I say, it is a series of changes that are underway.
That last item sounds very sensible to me, because the first time I went into a supermarket, I found it really stressful. So thank you, it seems as though it's thought of everything. Councillor Linda Pedrick, you had your hands up first to speak.
Thank you, Chair. The swap clothing, Angie, can you tell us a bit more about that? Is that children's, adults', what's the reasoning behind it? You know, is there a need for it? Is that why it's come forward?
Yes, it came out of some discussions that were in the Helping Dawlish group, and also that the churches, I believe, have had with Rock Dawlish. It started from a conversation to do a school uniform, which came out of one of the schools, and parents being able to afford. My understanding is the pilot project will be children's clothing, and I think it will be trialled in the autumn, September time, when the Gregory starts up at St Gregory's Parish Church, there's the pilot project. But there are a number of different projects that are sort of being mentioned. For example, rather than just having the larder, whether there is a way of supporting schools with potentially breakfast materials and this sort of things going forward. As I say, there are lots of ideas, this is a pilot project which Dallas and the churches have been leading on. But my understanding was, it initially came out of the school uniform situation. And we know that in other areas, a similar situation has exists, because we know that people are in financial hardship, and that would just be recognised in how this is developing. Thanks, Angie.
Thank you. Councillor Prowse?
Yes, thank you. Angie, I'm putting on my residents' hat, I'm taking off my council hat, and I'm putting on my residents' hat. And I would like to thank you, on behalf of many of my residents who live where I do, for you and all your volunteers, for the absolute excellent work you've done in summer pouring weather, looking after those who've had to go in and have their injections. I have helped for you many times when I've looked out of the window, and I do know that I live in an area where people here mostly have their second one, and they're really grateful for the easy access that they've had to the hospital. So on their behalf, I'm thanking you.
If I may, Chair, thank you, councillor Prowse, I will pass that along to the volunteers. As councillor Prowse will know, we have many organisations who have had volunteers, and some of them have been there since December, and have been in, the weather has been interesting, and dare I say it, some of the driving.
I suggest one of the reasons for that is a lot of old people like myself haven't been driving for a long time. Thank you very much, councillor Prowse, for those questions, and councillor Pedrick. And thank you, Angie, for the really interesting information you've just given us. If everyone's happy, we'll move on to agenda item 18.
Chairman, are you taking your votes to note the report?
I beg your pardon. Yes, can I ask you all for a physical hand, that you agree that we note this update?
That's unanimous, chairman, thank you.
Now we move on to item 18, you have a list also on this agenda, schedule of meetings for 2021/22, pages 41, 42. Would anyone like to speak on this? Councillor Prowse?
Yes, in view of the fact that we will be going back to physical, that sounds quite close, doesn't it? But physical meetings after this week. I was given to understand that certain meetings could still be had by Zoom, i.e. the working party meetings, but not what I would call major council meetings. I'd just like clarification about HR, is that a physical, or are we Zooming? Thank you.
No, chairman, HR would be a physical meeting.
Thank you.
Councillor John Pedrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, happy to move as set out, please. I propose that as set out, that we adopt them.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Right. Councillor Mary Lowther, you wish to speak?
Yes, just a small thing. If, sorry, if you find that you need, you know, one of the committees need a meeting, kind of a monthly one, instead of fortnightly, will that be in order? Have I made myself clear?
You mean, sorry, chairman, do you mean for a meeting to be more regularly than bi-monthly, as proposed?
Yeah.
Yes, although we would love to keep that to a minimum, because it was council's wish that we try and prevent unnecessary meetings from taking place, but yes, if something was time-sensitive, then we would call a meeting if we absolutely had to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Foden?
Thank you, it was just to comment that the annual parish meeting, which is, which got postponed from April to later one in May, I take it that should be added at some point to this schedule.
Yeah, good point.
My apologies, chairman, that should be included for the 26th of May. Location to be confirmed. I know members had initially suggested that we hold the meeting outdoors, but obviously there will still be some restrictions in place, and we'll need to gauge that situation a little nearer the time. But we will try and give members as much notice as possible regarding that.
Could, yes, councillor Prowse is just going to speak, and then I'd like to add something. Yes, councillor Prowse?
26th of May, by my knowledge, is that not half-term week? Is that not straight after the bank holiday?
Yes, chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Prowse, does that answer your question, or do you have something else to add?
No, just that if we were thinking of outside, we most probably have half of Devon with us.
Right, thank you. If I might just add something to this. Firstly, this is where we ask members of the parish, it's their meeting, really. Firstly, this is where we ask members of the parish, it's their meeting really, not rather than ours. We ask them to submit written questions. Can I ask that we do that at the earliest opportunity plus a reminder? And not just on the internet, that we put, obviously, you do normally put it into the local newspapers and maybe Nub News as well. And when we're talking about somewhere to hold these, I would just suggest the, there's a possibility that we could ask where the St Gregory's Church would be available because there is a lot of space there. And we have used it in the past for a meeting where we expected a lot of people. In this case, we just need a lot of room. So if I leave those two or three things with you, please, Andrew?
Yeah, thank you, Chair.
Right, so schedule of meetings, we've had a proposal to accept it as is. We've had a secondary, I believe.
Yes, Chair.
So we'll take this as a physical vote. You may raise your hands, please, if you're in favour of accepting this schedule of meetings.
That's certainly a majority, I'm not sure councillor Woods, Chair.
Or councillor Heath, I can't see his hand. Yes, he's up. Councillor Woods, we don't know. Oh, yes, he's there, yes. Thank you, Pirate.
Okay, that's unanimous then, Chair, thank you.
So we have agreed that we've approved the schedule. Last but one item, draft tourism strategy. Gosh, that was a lot of work that went into that, I think. A verbal update from the chairman of the Tourism Working Group, please councillor Terry Lather.
Okay, I know it's getting late, so I'm just going to go through this pretty swiftly if you don't mind. This is a little report because we have got a massive amount of stuff to look at. So far, this is mainly about the consultation, which again, Angie was at the heart of and organised and did the analysis on. So just, this is basically on the consultation. We had 81 respondents completed the consultation survey. 68 completed it partially, making a total of 149 responses. Now, that's not bad, in my view, you know, you quite often get many few, but 149 is bad. We're pleased to note that in addition to straightforward answers to questions, many respondents wrote comments which promoted lengthy discussion and the detailed analysis. We did quite a lot of work just on what people said. So this is a compilation, really of notes. Notable topics were transport and infrastructure. The wisdom of attempting to attract more visitors to Dawlish was quitted due to the existing congestion on the 79, particularly when approaching Dawlish to the dark holes in one direction and timber in the other. The scarcity of parking in Dawlish was a very significant factor. There were fears that even one bad experience could be enough to discourage a second visit. There was a few views invested to build on the parish's strengths rather than attempt to reinvent its destination, which exploit the area's green credentials and promote ecotourism by highlighting use of public transport, cycle paths and footpaths. Would be advisable to give more attention to out-of-season tourism. There were comments from respondents that more should be done to improve the use of the seafront at Dawlish and in particular, more activities including boating and kayaking should be encouraged. The working group shared this view and the idea of water taxis up and down the near resorts was discussed. One of the most reprising reports of the survey took extensive references to motorhomes and campuses. There's no doubt the motorhomes are well organised and have wide media coverage as some of the response may have been orchestrated. But that in itself indicates a need to take note of the views. Survey views diverge widely, but the working group felt it would be advisable to carry out more research into what is a potentially valuable market, which if controlled, could provide significant income, useful public relations at minimal cost, so more work on that. We looked at the USP, responders wrote about the old world charm of the parish, although some remarked the worsening appearance and much of the air due to dog litter, litter, dog mess and general unkemptness, untimely, there's a need for painting and that sort of thing. There were adverse comments about the number of empty shops and cafes closing in mid-afternoon and the lack of good restaurants. There was a general wish to improve the quality of the built areas, doing more of the surrounding countryside and beaches. The lawn was seen as a great asset to Dawlish town, it felt that more ought to be made of it, particularly out of the main tourist season. There appeared to be a general feeling that it should remain an open space, although were a few requests for playparks either there or near the CIC building. On the other hand, there was approval for the idea of a trail and playpark near the Manor Playpark. As part of this development, there would be a need for toilets and refreshment facilities. There appeared to be disapproval of turning Dawlish into a torquey type noisy resort or into another lord at market song. The overall view appeared to be that Dawlish remains a family seaside resort, with most activities during the day without noisy nightlife and with regard for the comfort of local residents as well as visitors. A specific and very popular asset is the waterfowl and particularly the black swans, which have seemed to be a symbol of Dawlish. I noticed Neil Saltemus here, he provided some numbers for it. The working group was informed there'd been 21 million views of the swans on YouTube in the last 12 months. That's an amazing number. And obviously, we want to look after them and help develop them and improve the area. During the tourist information, the survey showed the urgent need for improved means of communication throughout the parish, particularly since the demise of TIC in Dawlish. It's understood that work is undergoing on a promotional video of Dawlish and a standard for displaying information pamphlets has been obtained from the previous TIC for possible location and apps in the railway station booking office. Work is also in progress to update the loving Dawlish website. The survey showed that respondents want better communications with residents also. Some specific issues arising from the consultation were very specific, others more generalised, but none can be ignored. While listed below in a random fashion, all will be given further consideration at subsequent meetings of the working group and progress reports will be produced. So as a straightforward list, more attention should be paid to Cockwood and Colton, as in several parts of Dawlish. Alfresco eating and drinking and dining is desirable. We need to enhance the managrounds. We should consider how seawalls, seawall works are affecting the water, timber and the beach. Big one, the need for dog bins and enforcement. Control of goals, there's no one. Improvements in boatco, lack of signs in Dawlish. Now, we've had this up and down several times, something maybe look at with a careful eye. Lack of organised accommodation in Dawlish, both BMBs and Airbnbs. We've got to look at a new banstand, here we go again, to replace the current mark on the law. Very popular, quite a few people. And should be more made of the history of the parish and of the town. The summary that we came to was the working group's initial view of the public consultation is that comparatively a matter of tweaks are needed in a wide variety of areas to reflect the main themes outlined, rather than to attempt major changes. More analysis and discussion will be carried out, report will be issued. I don't know if you've got any questions, but I would suggest that I send you a copy of that so that you can see your pillows.
Thank you very much councillor Lather. That sounds a good idea if you could circulate that. But I believe councillor Prowse wishes to say something and then councillor Linda Pedrick.
Other way round, other way round, councillor.
I'm sorry, I beg your pardon, I'm looking at the list the wrong way, I've actually got a list this time. It is, my apologies, councillor Linda Pedrick first.
Thank you, Chair. Just listening to what you were saying councillor Lather about the cafes and restaurants. When Tracy was here, we did a lot of work in the town with the shops and we tried to talk the cafes into opening later. And they actually did a week's experiment. But after I think about four-ish, it just went completely dead. But what they have found is when somewhere opens at night and it's good food, like the mix and the French cafe, then they do come out at night. So if we could get more restaurant-type places or the cafes to do more food at night, then I think the fact that they shut from four till six would be irrelevant.
Right.
That's an interesting thing to sort of make a note up for the tourism because we have, the cafes have tried it, but it's not worked for them, it's not been viable.
Okay, thank you very much then, I'm making notes of that.
Thank you, Linda. Councillor Prowse.
I think when we started this tourism group, we had no idea of the, well, maybe councillor Linda Pedrick and I did, from the CIC that we had originally sat on. But it was like opening an enormous box of tricks. And I have to thank our chairman councillor Terry Lather for the amount of work that he's ended up having to do on this. And I would like to say, as we are on Facebook and we don't have our meetings, our tourism meetings, of which I'm a member on Facebook, that we do deal with the whole parish. It isn't just Dawlish Town Centre. We do look at Cofden and Cockwood and Dawlish Warren and Holcombe. So we are looking at the whole of the parish. Sometimes when we talk, we forget that this is a very large parish and actually the town centre is only a very small part of it. And I know that councillor Lather, we are always grateful for any ideas that we can use in the tourism. So that's a plea from me and just to let, and I would also say, it isn't just councillors that sit on this meeting. There are members of Holcombe, Dawlish Warren, Cofden, Cockwood, they also sit there. So we aren't just being governed by people who might be interested in the town centre.
Thank you councillor Prowse. Councillor Dawson.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask councillor Terry Lather if he has any idea from the consultation, what percentage of respondents were residents and what percentage were business owners, please?
Off the top of my head, I haven't, but I can see Angie shaking her head in the corner and maybe she does have some numbers to hand.
Angie, would you like to add anything?
We do, we do have the figures I can produce. They were broken down for both residents, visitors and people who work in the parish. And we also had an age profile. I'm happy to send that to all councillors after the meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Angie.
Thank you, Angie. Does that answer your question, councillor Dawson?
Yeah, I'd be really interested to see that, thank you.
What was your specific interest in that, Rosie?
In asking that question?
Yeah, yeah.
I think, because I often see, most on social media and things, that criticisms, I guess, and perhaps not so positive comments saying that the only people who get a say in Dawlish are people who have businesses, which I'm not saying for a second that I would agree with or back at all, but I just think that that kind of information is really important when it comes to communicating with the public as to who exactly, not actually naming people, but who it was that had input into a consultation. I think that's really important.
Right. One point I'd make about that, if I may, is that even that some of the comments might not be very reliable and you wonder whether there's any real basis to them. It's quite often the perception that matters. It's not just you hearing those, it's other people hearing them. And if there is any base to them, then we need to do something about it. So, you know, if you do hear something, then we perhaps have a look to see if we can find out if it is true. So it's thanks for the comments.
If I may, I would just add that since, because of Covid, virtually everything has been only conducted over the internet. I would have thought that all the younger people in particular, when I say younger, anybody under about 50 is young as far as I, or 60 is young as far as I'm concerned. But they all use the internet and they would all, I would have thought, been aware of this and been able to take part in the consultation so far, to the end of it. I would also say that, talking about previous experiments, one week to try late opening, especially if everybody opened it simultaneously, might not be a real result, particularly since it would depend on the time of year for a start and what kind of visitors you would expect at that time of year. You know, for example, we get older people on coach tours at certain times, we get families at other times. So there's still room for further experimentation, I think. But there's a lot of work going into this. And thanks especially to Angie and the clerk as well for all the work that they've produced, I think councillor Lather.
Yes, indeed, they're two minutes' help, we can possibly do without them.
Thank you. Councillor, sorry. Projects Officer Angie would like to say something.
I've just got the figures to hand, Chair. Of the survey results, of the 82 completed the question whether they were resident in the parish, worked or a visitor. 70% were residents, 10% worked and 30% were visitors, so that was the split. The main age groups responding were in the over 40 age group and then they've got an age profile. If the chairman of the tourism group is happy, I'm more than happy to send the whole full survey results round because we can anonymise them as he knows, which we did do, so that people's privacy. There was also an interest in that a number of respondents indicated they wanted to be kept informed with what happened with the survey. And 39 people gave us their details so they can be kept up to date over time.
Well, if you're asking for a response, my response would be the more information we put out, the better and more communication we encourage, the better. So yes, I'll be very happy for them to go out.
That sounds like a very good suggestion, Angie. I would just mention something myself, that some of the answers were not as valuable as they might have been because they weren't based on facts. There seems to be a lack of information as to what this council can do, what land and therefore responsibility is devolved to Timbridge, to the district council or the Devon County Council or ourselves or Nitrate Rail. And that's somewhere where it seemed obvious that we needed to gradually feed more general information about the area. Councillor Dawson, you wish to speak?
Sorry, I'm not used to having the power to unmute myself. I, just one last thing, I just wondered whether or not the group had considered using focus groups as one of the stages as well, just because it adds a very different dynamic and some extra depth as opposed to just the initial consultations.
Not yet. We're looking at all manner of means of looking, getting information in as quickly as we can. So yes, we're certainly looking at those. Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to this item 19, draft tourism strategy? Or are you happy to receive and note this update? Can raise a physical hand, please, if you're happy to note that you've received this update, this verbal update.
That's unanimous, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Last item. We are coming up now to 10 minutes to nine, so we do need to conclude the meeting. I think we've done very well, all things considered. This item refers to standing orders 5J brackets, I hyphen 21 in Roman numerals. This is to consider deferring the actions and reviews required by that standing order, not covered in this meeting, to a future meeting of the town council. I would like to propose from the chair that we defer this item to the next town council. If anyone would be happy to second that. Councillor Linda Pedrick, I think you were first out of the box, as they say. Could we have a physical show of hands, please, if you agree that we defer this to the next full council meeting, June the 3rd?
Chair, I'm sorry, just to clarify, it won't necessarily be to that meeting. Some of the items, some of the items in that standing order take place at various times, so it won't necessarily be that meeting.
I revise my proposal that we defer this item to the next future meeting as as such time as all the information is available.
Chair, might I just, I thought this one said that we deferred all other decisions that weren't decided here today to another meeting in the future. We're not looking to defer this item. We're looking for everything else that needs to be done as a technicality. We need to pass this item and not defer it, I believe.
It says to consider deferring the actions and reviews required by this. I will be advised by the clerk.
That's what standing order five J one to eleven says, that you can defer all these things. So that's what it's doing, if I understand correctly. But I will clearly defer to the clerk.
No, councillor Riggley has it right. Standing order five J one to twenty-one lists various actions that the council can consider in its annual meeting. I think if we were to do that, we might be here past midnight. So this item merely allows council to defer those actions to another appropriate meeting of the council.
So I'm willing to stand down on that if you would like to propose that in your own words, councillor Rickley.
Just that we invoke standing orders five J one to twenty-one before defer all other items as stated.
And councillor Taylor, are you seconding that?
Yeah.
Thank you. All that, all those who are happy to defer this as proposed, raise your hands, please.
That's unanimous, same for council. Oh, that's unanimous, chairman.
Thank you. Well, with that, I think we can congratulate ourselves of getting through a long, long list of items. Although, as we know, some have need further refinement and to be agreed at the next town council meeting, some of those we've deferred. Thank you very much for your attendance and your help and I will now call this meeting to a close at twenty fifty-three.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good night.
Good luck in the next year, Val.